Morning, everybody. It's nine o'clock. We'll start the meeting. The clerk will give a roll call, please.
Miranda.
Here.
Goussay.
Here.
Mika.
Here.
Btech.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Shudy.
Here.
Carl.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Murdick.
Here.
Eliffson.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Negro. Metzinger.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Pufal.
Here.
Franek.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Stendor.
Here.
Berlin is excused. Nineteen present.
Next on the agenda, we'll have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Um, everyone, Senator Quinn is on video here. Um, could somebody please make a motion to to move public comment behind Senator? Let Senator Quinn go next and then move public comment after, right after him.
I'll make the motion to move Senator Quinn to the above public comments.
Ron Stender, a second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Carey, say aye. What? Okay, Senator Quinn, you're on.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Morning.
Awesome. Well, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to join you today to chat. Uh, you've been on my bucket list to get to. I represent uh, pieces of nine different counties. I've been to Bayfield County Board meeting and you just, I just haven't quite made it to you yet. And once the session started, your meetings tend to be when I'm stuck in Madison. So, um, my every intention is to get to you in person. Um, looking forward to working with you all. Uh, obviously I'm from, from the Rice Lake area, so your issues are probably a little more unique than what I'm used to. So please, I just want to encourage you to always keep in contact or dialogue with my office. I have an in district staff as well that I'll be sending to meetings. Um, she's based out of Hayward, just to make sure we can always maintain that, that open dialogue and communication. Um, just wanted to touch on a couple of things and then I know, I think you're looking for an update on some of the tax issues that you guys seem to have found yourself in, um, due to some recent court rulings, not only recently, but um, in the distant past as well. The budget we are voting on, uh, tomorrow. Um, I'm leaving for Madison today for my home. Otherwise I'd be with you in person. I wouldn't make it on time if I went north first. So I apologize, I'm not with you. Um, so the, the shared revenue package, a lot of you have heard about um, is officially a done deal. It's being added to the overall budget. I think Ashland County and Dan can correct me is going to receive about six hundred and nine thousand dollars going forward on top of the current shared revenue that you are getting. Um, on the bright side as well, that six hundred and nine thousand dollar number will be pegged to the sales tax, meaning the state on average sees a two to three percent growth in sales tax, um, every year. And that number will increase as the sales tax increases. Um, so for the first time in a long time, you'll have some kind of shared revenue that actually has some built in growth. Um, which, which I know you haven't seen in a long, long time. Um, and as a former mayor myself of Rice Lake, um, I know that number has stayed flat or has gone down over the years. Um, another note on the shared revenue package, and I've, I've talked to Dan a little bit about is the potential for additional funds through the Innovation Fund. So I know right now you're working with Bayfield County to consolidate your dispatch services. There's a potential opportunity to have the state come in and pay for a portion of that funding. And so the budget should be signed and hoping in a couple of weeks, I think you have to sign on the dotted line for your contract, maybe late July, if that's right, Dan. Um, not sure exactly. Um, so what this will do is if you can show a 10% savings from your previous couple of years, um, projecting a few years out, the state will pay up to 25% of the cost of that service. Um, so that could be some real dollars as well. Uh, the verbiage isn't totally set in stone yet, but I'll, I'll work with, um, Administrator Grady on that as we go forward. Once that's set in stone to see if we can find some new aid for you there as well. On the, on the school aspect, um, it's pretty exciting. I know obviously you guys aren't the school board, but what the school does and the health of your school obviously impacts the county and it's important to all of you in this room. Um, so the Ashland School District, the Drummond School District and others that border um, or have a slice of Ashland County historically have been low spenders. And so what we tried very hard to do myself and Representative Green was to try to build in a new floor for some of our low revenue districts like Ashland that have always been kind of left out in the cold. Every time there's been an increase or an adjustment to the formula. So going forward under the broker deal, every school district will be able to spend a minimum of eleven thousand dollars per pupil. And I think Ashland's maybe at like 10, one, 10, two right now. Um, so they're going to see a very significant jump to allow them to be competitive with their peers, um, across the state. Um, so pretty excited about that for many of our northern districts. And then I guess with that, um, you know, we can touch, I can touch on an update of where we're at with some of the tribal tax issues that, that we've seen. Dan, I don't know if you want to kick this off or if you want me to just go right into it or open it to questions first, you, you tell me how you want to do this. It's your guys' meeting.
Well, Senator Quinn, I believe you and Representative Green were instrumental in getting this done. And if you'd like to explain it, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, and is, I don't, is Chance on the phone by chance?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, I know he'll be joining as well. He as well, um, couldn't jump up to your meeting because he's got to turn around. He's got to further drive than me. Um, so restable to make it to Madison in time. So we've been having conversations, um, basically since I have been elected, uh, not only with Dan, but Dan's counterpart in Bayfield County, Mark Abel's Ellison, um, and representatives from Sawyer County, Vilas County, um, as well about the, I would say, very complex, uh, tax issue that the state, your county and your local municipalities are facing. Um, so we've been trying to find some kind of a solution that recognizes that those people today holding the bag after all of this, uh, frankly did not cause this and they should not be bearing the full brunt, um, of the changes that we've seen. And so just recently, uh, we, like I said, we worked with, uh, Dan and Mark to come up with a number of what you guys have been missing over the years since that 14, 15 year, um, 2015, 2016 year, I apologize, where you've been kind of holding your municipalities or school districts harmless because the county tends to be, is statutorily the backstop um, to pay those bills, even if someone's not paying their taxes. And since you are not allowed to foreclose on these properties that aren't paying taxes, you had no way to recuperate that funding, which a county typically would do, um, in the event they're paying the bill and someone's not. So we've identified that number to be about 3.6 million dollars that the five surrounding counties are impacted by, and the bulk of that really is you guys, Ashland County and Bayfield County with again, some going to the three other surrounding counties. And so I'm, I'm pretty excited. The, the Joint Finance Committee um, authorized the expenditures of 3.6 million dollars to go back to the five counties. Uh, but there is one caveat. So we have language in the budget as well to try and address some of the tax issues specifically with the township of Sanborn. Um, now that a very small minority of the people are paying 100% of the bill um, and they are not, I would say maybe have a fair shake in representation on the town board, just the makeup of the town. Um, we have to change the way that town is able to tax them. And so we have verbiage in the budget that will set the town of Sanborn's mill rate, um, sets their borrowing capacity and sets their ability to charge back funds to other entities. Um, because we don't want an increasingly large burden falling on less and less people um, when frankly, it's no one's fault. And I would say again, there's not anyone in this room or myself that were around that signed any treaty or set up, um, the way we tax people, um, that were around at the time when these decisions were made. So we're just trying to find a solution that recognizes a handful of people shouldn't have to pay the whole bill. Um, and that frankly, we got to find some way going forward that if you receive some kind of service, you should have some kind of skin in the game. Um, I don't know what that looks like yet. Uh, but Chance and I's goal was to try to catch you guys up and at least make you whole up until today. Recognizing that we still have an ongoing problem going forward. Now, it's my understanding in speaking with Dan that the, the, the property valuations that are going to be coming off the tax rolls next year are just going to be gone. And that your ability to levy stays, but that cost is then spread upon, spread upon everyone across the county. And so everyone is going to make up that difference a little bit. Um, so I don't think unfortunately, there's any stomach right now in the legislature to pay something ongoing in perpetuity. But at a minimum, we wanted to get you caught up to, to where you are today and then work together to try to find a solution going forward. So right now the, the money is there, uh, joint, the Joint Finance Committee voted, it is part of the budget. And so I would encourage you guys, and I told this, um, to Administrator Grady as well, to maybe reach out to the governor and say, hey, this is a complicated issue. Um, there is no, no, no simple solve all. Uh, but we need this 3.6 million dollars. And I would argue, um, we need the verbiage for the town of Sanborn for your taxpayers as well to create some kind of continuity. So they know that they can afford to stay in their homes in the long run until we can figure out another solution. Um, so it's, it's fairly complicated. This is not what I expected. I was going to be working when I ran or when I was first elected. Uh, but I'm, I'm happy to help the best that I can. And I know Representative Green uh, worked very hard as well. We burnt quite a bit of political capital to get this done because it's very hard to convince people in Madison to care about anything north of Highway eight, let alone particular tax issues that, uh, they know nothing about. So uh, pretty excited that we're, we're at where we're at today. Uh, but obviously there's going to be more, more discussions going forward. And with that, I'm happy to, to entertain any, any questions, comments, concerns about this or, or any other issue that any of you board members might have.
Uh, Bill Metzinger from the city of Ashland. Um, we had brought up that we need to raise the sales tax uh, for income coming into the county uh, in Wisconsin. And I was out west, uh, the spring and they have sales tax out there like 12% and, uh, end up. Um, is there any thought or can you push to raise the sales tax from five and a half to six and a half or 6%? Um, because that'll be a direct benefit to the counties.
Yeah, good question. I think structurally overall, we have to start looking bigger picture on how we fund services. I'm supportive of a sales tax because frankly, there's a lot of people that don't live in Wisconsin or our communities that pay our bills. Um, same thing we see in Milwaukee and other parts of the state. So I've, I have these conversations. I'd rather pay in 8% in sales tax and fully fund our schools and take them off the property tax rolls. I think most people would be supportive of that. But it's, it's, that's a bigger picture thing and, and bigger picture is hard for, uh, Madison legislators to grasp. Um, getting them to fundamentally change shared revenue a little bit was a big lift. Um, but yes, I don't disagree. I think there's, there's better ways we can fund the core services that we all expect. Um, and I think some of these conversations will be ongoing. Interesting fact, we actually have more sales tax exemptions than we actually collect in sales tax. So there's lots of items, lots of products, lots of services over the years that have been carved out for one reason or another. And the state actually leaves billions of dollars on the table today that we just don't collect at the five and a half percent rate. And so we even talked about, why don't we get rid of every sales tax exemption? And you could even lower the rate and have more money than you have today. Um, but of course, if, you know, you introduce a bill that taxes, you know, grandma's insulin or food or things like that, that's a whole nother conversation that could be politically tough. But I think there's bigger picture ways that, like you said, we can, we can fund government that makes them more sense than we do today.
Yes, Liz.
Senator Quinn, is anything on the docket to, um, fund possible, uh, programs to, uh, reduce homeless individuals or, um, drug prevention, um, in this area and every area in Wisconsin and all over the country. We got that opiate epidemic right now and the homeless issue. Thank you.
Great question. So there, I, I'll be the first to say, I don't know the intricacies of the DHS budget. There's always TANF money, um, treatment and diversion money, things like that, that, you know, flow through our court systems or other services into your county DHS budgets, but obviously it's never enough. Um, you know, I was part of the hope agenda during the assembly time. You know, where we really tried to tackle and we were really a leader, uh, in Wisconsin across the country on, on dealing with the opiate epidemic. But again, it's, it's always never enough. It's still ravaging our communities. And in Northern Wisconsin, we've, we're blessed with, uh, lots of methamphetamine, which other parts of the state don't have. And so a lot of times treatment is, uh, focused on heroin and not on the meth problems that we see in Northwestern Wisconsin. So I think there's always more opportunity there and this plays into mental health. It plays into, um, safe and affordable housing, like you just said. Uh, I am excited in this budget that we just passed a package of bills to try and increase the amount of affordable housing across the state. Um, so I'm a Realtor in my other hat. Um, I'm also Chair of the Senate Committee on Housing. And we just passed through a package of bills that is trying to address the root cause of why we're not seeing the production of more affordable housing in our communities. So we want to increase the Lytec program. That bill's stuck right now. I got to get it over the hump. There's a few members that have some heartburn. But we passed a number of other bills that, um, have zero interest revolving loans for, for infrastructure, for converting commercial space to residential housing, to monies fixing old apartments in our, in our old downtowns and main streets where we know there's, there's rooms up above our businesses that have been either, um, that are either dilapidated or been abandoned or used for storage. Um, again, trying to incentivize and find ways to get developers to come to our neck of the woods and produce housing that, that our residents can actually afford. Um, and so just yesterday or last week, uh, the committee invested 525 million dollars into those package of bills. And so I'm hoping that will finally, um, spur some development and growth in our areas. We carved right in there that 35% at a minimum has to go to rural areas. It's broken out into five geographical areas. So not one part of the state gets all the money like we used to see. Um, so I'm pretty excited for that and hopefully we can, we can get some movement on that because we're in a really unique time where we don't have to beg people to move to our communities anymore. People want to come here. Now there's just no place to live. And so if we can find safe, affordable housing for these people, our communities can grow and will thrive and they're going to bring their families, their kids will be in our schools. That impacts our funding. Um, and you know, all of that, so on and so forth. So there's, there's definitely movement on the housing front, in particular for homelessness. We've had a few groups in our office trying to find some more creative ways to address that. There was a, a homelessness task force. Um, a couple of sessions ago, they passed some recommendations, some tweaks, but nothing earth shattering. So I would say if, if you find yourselves, um, pursuing particular solutions in Ashland County that are creative or innovative, or just don't fit with how state programs work, let me know because then maybe we can try to tweak it on our end in Madison to recognize the work you're doing and maybe support that.
Thank you.
George. Uh, Senator Quinn, George Goussay, uh, Ashland County District 14, which is a rural district. So it's in the news, uh, yesterday and today that the federal funds for high speed internet are starting to flow. I'm just wondering how you feel or what your thoughts are about the distribution and utilization of those funds.
Yeah, that's pretty exciting. So when I was in the assembly, uh, we worked very hard on broadband before broadband was a thing or it was cool. And, uh, we were just trying to get the legislature to spend, I think $2 million a year on our grant expansion program. Well, now fast forward, everyone's talking about it. Everyone supports it. It's bipartisan, which is great. And so I think the previous budget invested almost 70 million dollars in state dollars just into our broadband expansion grant program. Uh, we are getting close to a billion dollars now in bead money, the latest federal program that's coming out, which will be administered, administered through the PSC, um, through the state. So we're waiting to see some of their final rules. Um, but I know our providers are there and chomping at the bit, waiting for this money to come through. So we're going to follow that closely. Um, I'm also on the gosh, utilities committee, it's utilities and something else, but it regulates, um, oversees the PSC as well. Um, so they're going to make sure they're ready to go to make sure this funding flows in as quick as it can. Now it's divided out over five years. Um, there are still going to be areas that struggle. Frankly, if you're not in an area served by a cooperative, a local telco, you're going to struggle because I'll be totally blunt that some of the bigger players, um, really couldn't care less about our most, most rural residences because that's not where they make their money. And so what I would encourage you, I know Norado is up in your area. They do a great job. Sometimes they can be a little bit more expensive, but just know that when you use a co-op, your local telecom, the dollars you're paying every month get plowed back into the ground to then connect your neighbor. Um, so I always encourage people, government entities, businesses, homeowners. If you have a choice between a large, uh, national player and a local telecom, try to pick your local guy. So it's coming. We'll see what that looks like. Knowing we were getting a billion dollars is why the state chose not to put state dollars into this. Um, we are going to have capacity issues. There just are only so many crews. There's only so much fiber. There's only so much material that we can even procure to get into the ground. And so when you throw money on top of a system that's at capacity, all it does is raise the cost. And so this budget, we just took a pause with state dollars knowing we're getting a billion dollars in federal funding. So we'll see how that shakes out and then turn around and be able to reinvest in our program as well. So we should see a lot more connectivity over the next couple of years.
Kathy.
Senator Quinn, Kathy Schudy, District 18, Central Ashland County. Two parts to my first question. Thank you for working on the town of Sanborn thing. My phone doesn't stop ringing because of this question. So don't let up on the gas pedal. Keep going, work hard and get this completed. My second part is senior housing in Ashland County is terrible with the waiting list. I have a friend who would like to move to Ashland County. She signed up in every place possible in Ashland County to get senior housing and the wait is from one to three years to get into an apartment. She's 89 years old. She said, I'll be dead before I can get in on the lit, get the, get through the list. So we need to remember senior housing is, is not in good shape in Ash. I don't believe it's good in shape anywhere, but especially in Ashland County, one to three years is not acceptable. Thank you.
No, I appreciate those comments and you're absolutely right because if we can get seniors into living situations that better accommodate where they're at today in life, um, it frees up their home that they live in now that might be larger than they need for families that are looking for homes. So it's all, we're all interconnected. We're all related and all these issues are connected. So if you can develop senior housing, it helps everybody. If you can develop other affordable housing, it affects everybody. Um, so part of the package of those bills, there is a senior housing component to it. So it's not just for middle class affordable homes. There's also a senior living components as well. And the Lytec program that we have, I know, uh, the city of Washburn in Bayfield was pretty heartbroken. They just missed out on being awarded their grants for I think a 58 unit development and that would have been a mixture of market rate, senior and lower income um, housing. And so we're trying to find ways to bolster that program so we can get those developers that will build those, um, I would say multi-unit, multi-functional housing that, that will attract everyone to our communities.
Thank you.
Ms. Laura.
Lauren Agro, District Three, City of Ashland. Um, I have a question for you and an outlook. Um, so from what I'm hearing is that the ARPA money for aging programs was deobligated and pulled from their budgets. Um, we're already struggling in those areas and those programs from ADRCs to just like little local nonprofits that do our senior aging meals and such. Um, I'd like to know your take on that. And then a follow up to that would be what kind of funding is the state looking at doing for those projects? I know that we run right to the end of our budgets. We are not a heavy bloated kind of agency up here in Ashland County that does these kinds of services. We operate on a shoestring. So what kind of solutions does the state have?
Yeah, I don't know the particulars in terms of the funding you're referencing that might have been pulled. I know a lot of programs, they're experiencing the fact that the ARPA dollars are just running out. Um, they weren't um, obligated long-term. They were set funding. This is the same thing with the childcare accounts program, um, as well. And so there's a lot of people finding themselves in a financial situation where this federal funding is now gone and they're looking to the state to try to supplant that, which is great. It's just always hard, um, to fund everything when the feds leave us holding the bag. Now, I know the state does that to you too, as a county government, um, as well. So we all get to taste a little bit of that. Um, so I would, you know, if you have a particular program that funds your, um, you know, certain ADRC program that comes from the state, you know, meals on wheels, other things like that. Um, reach out to us and let me know. I'm not, like I said, I, I can't memorize or know every program, but if there's a particular outfit that's doing a great job and you know, a little bit of funding or the loss of funding you're going to receive really impacts you, um, shoot us an email with those details so we can dig into that further. I don't know the particulars um, on that piece. I know like in Barron County where I live, they invest a lot of tax levy into meals on wheels. And I know those are precious few dollars that you have to spread between DHS and the sheriff's department and roads and infrastructure. Um, you know, it's never enough, but um, you know, please maybe just shoot us an email with particular programs that that you think are important and we can do a little more deep diving into those.
Thank you. I will definitely do that.
Yeah, please. And I can, um, I can send, Dan has my email. He can send it to the, out to the board. Um, so you have a direct contact to us as well.
Any more questions for Senator Quinn? See, none. I'd like to thank you, Senator Quinn, on behalf of Ashland County, especially the people of, uh, the Sanborn area that were affected so dramatically by that tax debacle we had. Thank you again for your hard work and keep up the good job.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to address the board. Again, I apologize. I'm not there in person. Look forward to meeting you all at some point. Um, but please keep the dialogue open and, and message us anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, no, he's, no, Representative Green is not on.
Okay, we'll go to, uh, number two, approval and adoption of the agenda. Need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Kathy Schudy to approve agenda, seconded by
Ron Stender.
Ron Stender, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mr. Carey, thank you. Next we'll go to the number three, the public comment period with a limit of three minutes per person. Thirty minute limit for all public comments. Okay, first one up is Paul. I can't make out that last name. Okay, Kim, Kim of Asser.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here today to set the record straight on what Sheriff Zupke said at the last board meeting. And I appreciate that everyone is taking the time out to pay attention to what I'm saying. So an inmate sent in a complaint on October 23rd of last year saying that he was sexually assaulted. That was a Sunday. My staff emailed me that day and I replied to their email asking, were the inmates separated? Yes, they had been for several days. And also, um, I had my sergeant that was working take the kid out and talk to him so that there was an investigation started that day, the day of a complaint was filed. That week, I sent over the paperwork, um, through a staff member of mine to the Ashland Police Department. The Ashland Police Department had the paperwork for two weeks. They then decided that they could not investigate this, um, sexual assault. It was kicked back to us. I tried, um, Douglas County, I tried Bayfield County. They did not want to do the investigation. So I had our own They did not want to do the investigation, so I had our own investigators take care of it. Usually we have someone out of county so that there's transparency, which is what I'm all about. And um our one sexual assault investigator was on vacation deer hunting. He did not return until November twenty-ninth, which is when he started the investigation. It had actually started the day the inmate filed the complaint. I have copies of the emails from the staff to me proving that it was taken care of immediately, that the inmate was not in any imminent danger because the inmates were separated, had been separated. I also have um, an email from Lieutenant Scott Moreland from the Ashland Police Department saying that they cannot complete this investigation and that um due to them not being trained properly and they kicked it back to us. That was November fifteenth. So it was in their hands the entire time. I also regarding the sexual assault have a copy of the letter from District Attorney Meany saying that he has concluded that the state will not be issuing any criminal charges. This conclusion is based on the state's inability to meet its burden of proof. If there was proof that something occurred, first off, why was it never shown to me? Because I never did see anything showing that a sexual assault occurred. Second off, why would the district attorney say he's not going to um prosecute anyone? Because there wasn't enough proof. They couldn't meet the burden, the burden of evidence. Nothing was told to me that I was doing a bad job at all during two thousand and twenty-two. As a matter of fact, I have a letter of appreciation from the sheriff at the time stating how great of a job that I was doing, working through short staffing and the pandemic and um not enough training. Why would I get a letter of appreciation for how good I was doing if I was doing such a horrible job? And if I was doing such a horrible job, why was it not brought to my attention for three months? Three months. They're saying that it was such a dangerous place. If it was so dangerous, why didn't they kick me out when it, when it happened and say, oh my God, this place it's, it's going downhill. You, you need to get out or you need to fix it. Nothing was sent to me.
Want to wrap it up? Kim, you're way over the limit.
The six minutes? No, I'm not.
You're way over the three minutes.
I have six minutes.
Go ahead.
All right. So anyway, um, the audio that um Sheriff Zubkey has from the meeting that we had, he states that I called him a liar numerous times, that he tried to um close the meeting. I told him that he has a bad memory. That's what I said. You have a bad memory. So if that's calling someone a liar, then I don't know. I, I've never had that, but um, and lastly, he talked about a Facebook post of mine. I have a copy of that Facebook post. There is absolutely nothing in that post written by me that has, that is, should be construed as racism. Everyone knows I am not racist. I am quite honestly, the inmates all know that they're just orange. That's, that's it. They're, they're inmates. So I have the um Facebook posting. If someone puts something on there that Sheriff Zubkey did not like, he should I mean, it's the First Amendment rights. They have First Amendment's rights to say whatever they want. So.
Time's up, Quinn.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And someone really should take a look at why so many people have quit up there. Um, two more have filed.
All right, the only other one we have is Paul. Are you going to speak or no? I don't know why it's on here then. Anyone else for the uh public comment period? Recognized Sheriff Brian Zubkey.
Sheriff Brian Zubkey from County. Well, as long as this show is going to continue every board meeting, I guess I'll show up too. Um, like I said, a proper investigation that happened in a jail is all true, what between the two inmates every day for two months. Um, as a supervisor, you acknowledge those faults and you handle immediately to establish that something happened. And go forward with discipline right away. None of that ever happened. Then you, if you want to hire an outside investigation at the time, in the end, they concluded that, okay, our agency can do it. Keep in mind, at no time was Ryan Zubkey ever notified as chief deputy, first in line supervisor as well. Um, at that point, the trust is gone. Why it was waited to start the investigation, it was started uh immediately by the investigator, but until I got involved when I become sheriff, because the trust factor of why these private meetings occurred. Um, and again, like I said, about the Facebook posts, it's on her page. If it was me, family members doing, I'd denounce it and say this is wrong. So again, have a good day and I apologize. And like I said, if people, uh, we expected a certain amount of people to resign and like I said, we're going forward. Every billing phase happens and it's going to take a couple of years and I know we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Zubkey. Anyone else? Okay, we'll uh close the uh public comment period. We've already done the presentation by Senator Quinn, so we will go on to the regular agenda. Approval of the June sixth, twenty twenty-three county board minutes. Need a motion?
So moved. Franek.
Motion by Liz Franek to approve. Ron Stender will second. Seconded by Ron Stender. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We go to five B, approved, disapproved, joint dispatch resolution, R O six, twenty twenty-three. Dash one, four, four, eight, an intergovernmental agreement. Do you need a motion?
Just Laura Agro and make that motion.
Before you vote in motions, I just want everybody to know that approving this resolution means you're approving the intergovernmental agreement also. There are one agenda items, so you're, you're approving both. Approving the resolution approves the intergovernmental agreement also. So I want everybody to know that before motions were made.
I still make that motion.
Yes, I'll second.
Seconded by Clarence Campbell. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to six. Administrator updates.
Well, um, I guess Senator Quinn pretty much went over most of my updates. So I don't have much to, and we just approved the joint dispatch, so uh, I don't really have much for an update. Other than um, we do have a new emergency managers who started today. Um, Christina, would you? Yeah, if you want, you can go stand here.
Good morning. My name's Christina Zwankowski. And I was um, I accepted the position last month and I started actually yesterday. I um have a history in law enforcement, twenty-three and a half years. And I'm looking forward to changing gears and taking on this new challenge. I'm excited to work um in this community. I've lived here for thirteen years and I'm raising my daughter here. She goes to the Ashland Middle School. She's thirteen and um I'm really excited to work in this county and hopefully um add something to it.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Christina, I'm Kathy and I'm on the county board for District Eighteen. I thought we were going to have a discussion about the nine-one-one system, but we just voted in there. I didn't know that we weren't going to have a discussion, so I'll add it to this part. When we're talking about nine-one-one and implementing Ashland Bayfield County, whoever is on that committee to make that happen, I would like to personally meet with you guys. And my husband does snowplowing for the town of Ringo, which goes all the way out to County G G. You cannot get a signal on a cell phone when you get out in quote the hills by the Pinocchio Mountain Hills. So someday when you have time, I would like to run out there and try to call you and see how the connection is because it is very poor quality out there. And if we're going to do both Ashland and Bayfield County, Bayfield goes even farther than Ashland. So when it's convenient for you guys, I'll run out and go make the call and see if you can connect with me.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I do have one more comment or actually rather Senator Quinn.
Yeah, Dan, I apologize for, for butting back in for just a moment. Um, I just wanted to clarify the the resolution you passed to move forward with the consolidation of dispatch. I just want to, to caution, so the the potential monies in the shared revenue package for consolidation aid of services is not retroactive. And so if for some reason the state views that you've started this before the innovation fund has been passed and funded in the budget, you won't qualify. And so I don't know what your timeline is, and I know you just passed something, but I just wanted to throw that out there just so we don't shoot ourselves in the foot and and not get that money.
Yeah, the merge is going to happen January twenty-five.
Oh, beautiful. Okay, sorry. I just about had a heart attack, so I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Senator Quinn, you had made a comment though that there would need to be some cost savings shown to qualify for the innovation funds. This doesn't necessarily save or cost savings. This is just an investment, so would it not necessarily qualify? I guess that was my question. I didn't get a chance to ask. I was going to ask Dan offline, but what's your feelings about that? If there's no cost savings, are we still going to be able to qualify for innovation?
Yeah, that's a good question and we're going to see what the final verbiage is. I'm not sure if they're talking about savings for particular entity that's joining in or the overall service. We have to see what that is. Um, I'm hoping there's some way, like, like you mentioned, just because we join a service doesn't always save us money, but it's something we have to do. Uh, I'm, I'm hoping there's some way we can finagle the numbers to show that. Um, and we'll, I'll work with Dan and we'll see what that looks like.
While we're on that, uh, I think there needs to be a couple edits to the resolution that we just passed. I, there was not time to bring up any discussion. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that the Ashland County Board of Supervisors assembled today to vote on this instead of Bayfield County.
Okay.
And uh does the Ashland County Board need to designate Larry Finkelbaum as the county board supervisor serving on the board of directors?
Oh, no, you're right.
Or, and does the action by Bayfield County need to be Ashland County Board of Supervisors?
Yes, we'll fix that for the chair. Right, um, that's all I got.
That's all you got?
Yep.
Staffing and personnel. Bill.
Do we, do we need to do an amendment to that resolution that we passed with those changes? That pointed out?
Um, what I would do, eh, if you want, the best way to do it would be to since it was unanimous to vote, anyone can make a motion to reconsider. And then reconsider, make the amendments and then pass it again.
Motion to reconsider.
I'll second that motion.
And then.
Favor, say aye. Motion to reconsider passes.
Motion to accept the resolution with the proposed edits of fixing where Bayfield County should be Ashland County.
I'll second that.
And then uh also the representative.
And the rep, and.
Yes.
Strike the representative.
Do, do we also need the procurement plan? Are we going to follow Bayfield County's procurement plan or are we going to follow Ashland County?
There will be Bayfield County.
Okay, so that one's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so there was an amendment offered. Is there a second for the amendment?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, then so then you're up for debate or final passage either way.
Now we had a vote on the amendment, right? Now we have a motion and a second to approve the uh changes by Brad Ray. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have anything on staffing and personnel?
Uh, there's a sheet under, on your desk that has all the comings and goings. Or the goings. And of course, you already met our new hire.
You have nothing on staffing?
It's on, on your desk.
Pardon?
It's also on the website.
Bill.
I have a question for the administrator.
Yeah.
Um, salary increases uh take effect.
July first.
July first.
First payroll in July.
Is there still grievances being filed? Uh, and what's happening with them?
Those um, those have all come back and they'll be on the executive committee agenda July eleventh. So uh whatever decision exec makes will be able, is in time to make, still be in that first payroll of July.
Right, Liz.
I just have a question about the joint dispatch. When will the Ashland County employees be asked to join?
Yes. Yes, the goal is to make sure everybody still has a job. They will become Bayfield County employees. Um, largely yet because that's where they're going to be working. Um, Bayfield County does have slightly better benefits also, and the wage structure is a little bit higher from there too. So they will get a, they will get a benefit for doing so.
Um, I have a question about this email that says that uh board members may not attend closed session portions of the meeting remotely. Now, when we were down at county's association last time, Andy Phillips had a whole presentate, well, no, two times ago. There was a whole presentation about this and there, as long as we write, put a piece of policy in our manual that says that we are allowed to do that under certain circumstances, along with using a headset, making sure there's nobody else in the room with us. We can still do that and I think that is an important part because it gives flexibility to the board members also to continue to be part of these meetings, even if they're not here. I mean, revolt meetings are the trend.
Heather, yeah, um, Clark Shutey was in contact with WCA. Uh, we'll, I'll follow up with Sarah and if that's the way it needs to be, then we should make it an official policy of the board along those lines.
Yeah.
And then, then we can bring that to exec and then to the fine, next board meeting.
Yeah, it was from Andy, so I, I, I know that I don't trust Sarah, but
I, I will.
Depends on how the question was asked.
I will talk to, okay, I'll talk to Jake Curtis.
Okay, thank you.
George.
Uh, yes, could we please have an update uh regarding the joint meetings between the county and the Bad River Tribal Council and specifically on our proposed joint resolution on clean water?
Um, there is no meeting scheduled at this point with the tribal council. Um, I'm trying to get one scheduled. Uh, but it will be when they're ready to meet.
Any outcomes of the most recent meetings?
And as far as the resolution, um, the, the tribal council will take it up when they feel it's ready.
Any other issues of significance that we should hear about from those meetings?
There's nothing significant, no. You were at the last meeting, so.
So, just to jump on this, so board members attending remotely shall be entitled to compensation for participation, provided they attend the entire meeting. So, as someone who works full-time and has meetings that can carry over, I can be late, ten, fifteen minutes, and I just want to make sure.
You're fine.
Because I don't.
You're fine.
This is hard enough.
We're not going to, as long as you're here for the meeting, we're not, as long as you're here, that's fine. We're not going to be sticklers.
On the other side of the coin, sometimes people have to leave
Yeah.
earlier than the end of the meeting.
Yep, and as far as I'm concerned, you were still at the meeting and would get paid. If there was a problem, we'd talk to the individual supervisor before doing anything.
Dan, I got a question for you.
Sure.
Has there been any dialogue from the department heads about why so many people are leaving? What is the problem?
Well, I know in the Sheriff's Department, it has to do with people who were loyal to the previous sheriff. We haven't had much turnover lately. In HHS, which is a good reason, good thing, other than normal attrition. We have had some retirements. I know we're getting another retirement in the Sheriff's Department in August or September, which is which is normal. I know there's been some issues in other offices. I know the clerk of courts is running through people like crazy. I don't know why that is. I've talked to, I've talked to them, but I've talked to staff in there. Nobody seems to know what's happening there. I know another office has some personality conflicts that the department has working to resolve. I guess it's just a few departments that are really the problem.
Any more questions for Dan? That's all we have on the agenda. Next we need a motion to I got Kathy, you're right. Make a note of that.
One thing, last month, we adjourned, we adjourned the meeting, we adjourned the meeting before the supervisors got to do their part and tell, maybe some people had ideas that they wanted to share. Please don't do that. Let the supervisors that have something they want to share with the county board, this is their time to do that. And last time we adjourned the meeting, we hadn't even finished the agenda yet, remember? So, under the supervisor's report, mine is the Ashland County Fair is going to be August seventeenth through the twentieth. We are having the Ashland County Board Supervisor's Horseshoe Pitching Contest again this year. First place is twenty-five dollars, and it goes down from there, so we are doing it. So get practicing, it's a fun event. And there's no business that's done, just monkey business. So, I welcome you all to come throw some shoes. Laura Negro did it one year and she won first place the first year she came. So, it's just a fun event. Thank you.
Matt.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to raise a concern that I have, and it's happened the last two meetings under citizen comment of somebody saying, I'm giving my three minutes to Mr. Pufall. I think we need to review our rules. I don't think that's allowed. And I would support not allowing it, otherwise it's going to get carried away. I could come in with a list of ten names saying, these ten people have given me their three minutes and talk for the full half an hour. And I don't think that's our intent here. And I think that should be reviewed, and I think that should be ended, but just want to bring that up as a concern.
I appreciate. Matt and I don't think we've ever encountered that before.
Matt, we're going down to the WCA in about six weeks, and we'll bring that up down there and ask them how we should handle that.
Mari. Didn't that, didn't that happen once before and we took a vote and allow someone to do that?
I'll put it on the executive agenda. And then that.
I actually looked it up while we were sitting here, and it's according to parliamentarian rules, it's not allowed just to assign that, so it would be our rules beyond that if we decided we could vote to give somebody extra time.
Do you have, can you email me that's, that's and that way next week we can just bring it up and say, this is it.
Any more comments from the supervisors? Gary.
Yes, first, first. Hold on, let's see. First, I want to ask Supervisor Campbell if I can bring something up that's personal. I just want everybody here to be aware that I worked for Ashland County in economic support, and my first supervisor was Beth Bellini, who's Clarence's assistant. She recently passed away. Beth Bellini was one of my best supervisors in my career. She left for the state of Wisconsin, I became the supervisor, and then about a year or so later, I joined her at the state office. So we worked together for fourteen years. She was a good friend, a great supervisor, and a great Ashland County employee. And so I just wanted to take this time to say again to Clarence, my sympathies are with you and your family. And I think that all the Ashland County employees who knew Beth will say that she was a great asset to the county. So.
Thanks, Gary.
Anybody else? There are none, we'll move on to motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Blake. Thinking about John. All in favor, say aye.